...with our cannabis bylaw. Additional requirements, G.
Sorry.
Application requirements, uh, G. Is that right?
Yep. So we took out the language that was redundant of section thirteen up above.
Okay.
But we may want to have just a one-line following, you know, following submissions shall be made as part of the special permit application or something along those lines.
Which refers back to that section which said this stuff you can use.
No, it says we have, you know, application requirements and then it goes number one, security plan, number two, resource plan. You can just put in a one-line that says, "Following submission shall be required as part of a special permit site plan application."
Okay, alright. That looks like what I had on next, security plan.
Yep.
Yes. I noticed we asked for the security plan to go to everybody but us.
So the reason behind that is that some of this information is going to be sensitive and we may not want it as part of the public record. We don't want to sort of advertise what your security is, but we do want to make sure that the people who have information pertaining to whether or not sort of the advocacy or need to have some knowledge of what like those plans are, have copies of them. So that was why it wasn't specifically submitted to the planning board.
Do we get to actually see a copy of it at some point, or we just close our eyes?
The idea was that the people who would be qualified to review that would be police and fire and that they could provide comment on their review of a security plan to the board as part of that.
But, you know, shouldn't we be involved in lighting, you know, motion-sensitive lighting?
That's really all going to be regulated by the state and that's why it says it's a copy of the security plan approved by the commission as part of the issuance of the provisional license. So it's going to be a security plan that's already been vetted by the state. And the idea here is that it goes to police and fire who then are maybe aware of that plan and if there is some sort of community-specific provision in that that they want to comment on or address with the applicant, they're able to do that as part of this review process and then make assurance to the planning board that they've been included in part of that discussion.
So when it comes to site plan review and where, do we know where the security cameras are going to be?
Well, I think you may not.
I don't think the cameras are usually, you're talking about lighting more than anything. Am I wrong there?
What, I guess one of the concerns that you would have, that you would want to see information on. I mean, the question, whether or not the site is secure from sort of the police.
Okay, so they say it's okay, then we have to go with it.
But the concerns you may have about like, is the lighting going to affect neighbors or things like that? I mean, I think we did put lighting in here or something that.
Yeah, I think the concern is that we don't conflict in town requirement for lighting and in the security requirement for lighting, which might be in direct opposition of each other. Mr. Chairman, we frequently get a response from different departments for input to an application of that before us. And many times, the response is, "No problem," without any detail. Should we ask for some detail and have their response to their approval?
To add to that, the police and fire department have a form letter and they sign the bottom line up and send it back. We get the same form letter every application.
Okay, is that necessarily bad or good? That's the question.
My only point is that security is something that the state is regulating quite restrictively and those plans, there's not going to be a substantial amount of local input on that. It's whether they meet the state standard. There are some provisions under the state act that if they want to do something other than what is state mandated, some sort of lesser security, there has to be input from local authorities with respect to those alternative plans at the state licensing stage. So, I mean, zoning really concerns itself with use of land and certainly security could be a component of that, but you also have to take into account that certain things are simply just preempted by the state in the marijuana context. The state has said, "We want to have control and purview over security." And so that, to some degree, removes that from the ability of the board to regulate in a way that could potentially be inconsistent with how the state is regulating.
Does this also apply to fencing?
Paul, could you repeat that in the logic too?
Yes, does this also apply to fencing?
Yes, security applies to fencing.
Well, it depends on the establishment. If it's an outdoor grow facility, then there is a fencing requirement.
If it's a secure building, it would be a.
There's not necessarily.
Building issue.
What about a secured greenhouse that has a plastic lining that is exactly like, if you're waiting to. That require fencing?
Again, the state is going to have a say in whether or not they deem a site to be secured under their own regulatory authority.
Could we determine?
Well, this is the language.
Okay.
I note that you object to the fact that we don't have any interventions.
No, I just want to be able to, if somebody asks a town meeting, you know, "What about this?" I can say, "Well, the state has mandated that this be this way and the reason why we can't tell you is for security reasons, we don't tell everybody what's going on." And you have to ask the police chief what pass and buck.
Alright, I don't see a problem with the language. Jack? Bruce?
Nope.
Peter?
No.
B, the security plan shall be updated on an annual basis and any changes shall be reported to the police and fire departments. Is that specific to this bylaw or is language like that in other towns' bylaws?
It is in other towns' bylaws. The idea behind this is that certainly if there's an issue on the property, you want to have your local law enforcement, emergency personnel apprise of what the security is and what those plans are. So this is just a way to make sure that they're updated and informed.
Jack, any problem with that line?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Local Bruce? It's going to the board. Okay, that's fine. C, the security plan shall meet all security requirements of 935 CMR 500.110.
Not necessary to include that. It's going to have to meet that anyway, but.
That is where the security plan comes from.
That's where it comes from.
I don't mind it being there because that at least lets someone who is just interested in figuring out where it came from look it up if they wish to.
Yep.
I'm going to assume everyone's okay with that? Thank you. Resource plan, look at us move now.
Here we go.
Resource plan A, all marijuana cultivators, including, but not limited to craft marijuana cooperatives and micro businesses, and marijuana project product.
Product, yeah.
Marijuana product manufacturers? Is that beside words?
Yep.
Shall submit a resource use plan to the planning board outlining planned practices for use of energy, water, waste disposal, and other common resources and to ensure there will be no undue damage to the natural environment. Satisfied with the language? I'll start with you, Peter. Paul?
I don't know whether it's appropriate here or when we get to the special permit, but in going through the local comprehensive plan, they spoke in terms of concerns of organic fertilizers, chemical fertilizers, nitrate, nitrogen loading limits, herbicides, pesticides, private wells being tested once a year for bacterial safety, reducing nitrates. Are these all things that should be included in the special permit?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I spoke to Kevin, the former chairman of the water resources, and his main concern was pesticides of all kinds, pesticides, fungicides. And it was his thought that there would be a desire to use fungicides and that would be something that would be a problem. That was his suggestion.
Okay, so it's not mentioned specifically in the bylaw?
Also, if these sites are over the areas where water for produce now is collected or other commercial areas, there'll be special limitations.
And I can see how this language was crafted specifically for Truro because we get most of our water from private wells. Most other towns have a public water.
And they also have wellheads where other towns are supplied by water compared to their own.
Okay. I have to ask then, where else do we protect our groundwater in our bylaws? And how does it apply? Is this the place to apply protection for groundwater?
Maybe just a specific mention of any land, pesticide use of any kind, and fertilizer use. You know, is that, is that useful? Just so we have an idea of what they were considering, whether it was appropriate for wherever they live.
Well, you're going too fast for me. I'm going slow.
Mr. Chairman, in, I believe it was in the early nineties when the KOD Commission came in and permitted the vineyard within the wellhead of the Baldilly Weld Field. They had a section which listed all of the organic fertilizers that could be used and listed all things that could not be used by vineyard. Would it make sense for us to protect the water? And to explain to people that the people who are willing to grow things are protecting the water?
Right, especially for wellheads. That would probably work just as well. I mean, I'm sure the vineyard is, I mean.
Well, I think.
Spongesize and various other things may all come into it.
They're limited to organic.
Oh, okay.
Well, they use fungicides.
Are you using fungicide?
Yes, I do.
Well.
Will be cannabis.
So if they saw that they would be prohibited, just so you would know what was allowed and what wasn't?
Do they also check the water? I have no idea.
How is that? They check my water.
We removed board of health from this.
We didn't remove it, yeah.
The reason to remove that was that they already had to submit something to the board of health or?
The board of health doesn't have jurisdiction in zoning context. So certainly if the planning board receives a resource plan and would like to get input from the board of health, then they can do so, but you can't delegate your authority to approve a resource plan to the board of health.
I'm more concerned with that we don't actually specify what products can be used on farms because that's also not our purview. To have a particular board that does provide the feedback to us that these uses are within the boundaries as allowed by the state or cannabis control commission. I would imagine there are some things already written into the control commission and not positive about that. Would you know whether there are provisions to protect water table, water supply, runoff, whatever?
Yeah, I mean, some of that falls under your own sort of water resource protection district bylaws. I mean, you don't need to, so to the extent that those are applicable in the areas where these uses are going to be taking place, that's sort of separate regulatory control that applies. Much of this is being sort of from indoors, so some of that is going to be in a very controlled environment.
I would imagine that's true, but then of course there is the rule of the degree that is in excess of the product.
That is part of state regulatory control.
I need to, I need to book the board to tell me whether they're comfortable with this wording, rather than complicate it with a list of items that may or may not be in existence in four years, so.
Maybe just a mention of planning pesticides use. Just to get an idea of what they're planning. Obviously, it's allowable even in the area of collecting water for produce now to use fungicides and herbicides.
Well, we don't know that that's the truth.
Well, but, but I mean, just to mention that that would be something that we would be interested in looking at, just as we're interested in looking at water processing.
Mr. Chairman.
Get him.
Get that, Jack. I think that there is, within the cannabis control commission's rules here, that they allow for what are state-approved products, chemicals, herbicides, whatever. But even though they need to be approved by the state in general, they may not be appropriate for communities like ours, which has a sole source act of farm and mostly private wells. So I think some consideration over and above what may be a state-approved product should be within the consideration of.
And also the limitations are specific for the area. Outside of the wellhead area, there would be fewer limitations. But in the wellhead area, there are specific limitations. And I don't know exactly what they are. I put in this amount of, you know, food.
Does the town not already have water resource protection district?
Yes, we do.
I haven't looked at it. I mean, in any case, that was Kevin's concern. He's adapted that principle to what he would like principally to transmit to the planning board.
Some language perhaps?
Well, our water resource protection district, which is on page fourteen, is minimal. No, it restricts junkyards, solid waste disposal, public sewage treatment facilities with onsite effluent unless tertiary or re-treated in car washes, coin-operating, commercial laundry, trucking or bus terminals, or airports.
Have you liked that?
So you can just have it included in the requirements for site plan?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, sure.
Well, and we also have, because we're not there yet.
Because it'll change all the time.
We have some additional provisions relative to cultivation that we. And the organization of this now, I mean, some of this on the next page was submitted by the craft cooperative. We put it under a heading, additional regarding cultivation. We also are going through a section right now, which is just application requirements.
Okay.
So we may need to think about how this, how this organized, but the pesticide or sort of resource plan needs to be more specific more to cultivation operations. If we're going to have a specific section directed to those uses, that might be more appropriately included there.
Part of the special permit? I mean, part of that process of the site family, is it a special permit?
Well, I mean, all of this is part of special permit site plan. So, where are we up there?
I'm still on A. And when it says in the, seems to be one sentence. "The outline of planned practices for use of energy, water, waste disposal, and other common resources and to ensure there will be no undue damage to the natural environment."
Well, I think as Katie said, this pesticide issue we could address in section, paragraph two of the additional provisions section, because the resources is how you're using resources.
I understand.
And depleting them potentially.
Or polluting.
So, I mean, you put it one place or the other, but I think we need to move forward and it certainly could go in the special permit section.
Well, we all, we all have a heads up to the fact that the interest is in protecting the natural resources.
Right, and I mean, polluting the water is not the same as using the water as a resource. So I think that this question about harming the water really should go on the next page and not in the resource plan provisions, because then to me, a resource plan is how I intend to use resources, not what I intend to do to those resources beyond using them. So I don't think we need to add it there, but whatever everybody wants to do, it's okay. We need to just do something.
Okay, we're alert. We're not going to leave it out. We're not going to put it here. I'm in agreement with that. Paul?
Works for me. Sure, we'll leave it.
We'll put it in the next section that we come to somewhere, future section. Thank you. We'll leave this stand with the changes as written. B, the resource plan, if applicable, shall include an electrical system overview, proposed energy demand, and proposed electrical demand offsets. Electrical demand offsets. Ventilate, say what?
Yes, I refuse.
I think that was more intended as like renewable energy. Like if they're going to offset their use by installing solar panels or something like that.
They can move some of these things. Good place for solar panels.
Electrical demand offsets, ventilation system, air quality, proposed water system and utility demand. The planning board may waive this requirement if it is determined that the scale and scope of the use does not require such review. Plenty left to there. As is?
As is.
Peter?
I'm not wild about the last sentence, but I'm not going to argue about it.
Waive in something. Jack? Finally, thank you, Bruce. Let's leave that as written. Let's get to traffic study and circulation plan. The applicants shall submit a traffic circulation plan for the site to ensure the safe movement of pedestrian and or vehicular traffic on site.
Part of the site manager.
All of the site plan review, so is there actually done in language?
Yeah, but let's put it in here for the.
Fine.
Do you hear it, Kevin?
B, a traffic impact and access study shall be required for all RMEs or MNTCs that generate twenty-five or more peak hour vehicle trips or two-hundred-and-fifty or more daily vehicle trips at the RME or MNTC. Access to existing roadway networks. Language, let's see. Traffic impact and access study shall be required for all RMEs or MNTCs that generate twenty-five or more peak hour vehicle trips or two-hundred-and-fifty or more daily vehicle trips at the RME or MNTC access.
That access to daily, to existing roadway networks. Is that the word that's missing?
Something is missing. There might be a word that's missing, but it says it's missing. I'm not sure which one. Okay.
It should say that access existing roadway networks.
Yeah.
And two should come out. So that should go in, that access existing roadway networks. And then it would be two-hundred-and-fifty or more daily vehicle trips that access existing roadway networks as they attempt. It's a little lost with the RME and MNTC.
Thank you, that changes except. The study shall be based on standard traffic engineering guidelines developed by the. developed by the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act. The planning board may require a traffic study if in their determination one is warranted because of public safety concerns. Planning board may waive the requirement of a traffic impact study if, in the opinion of the planning board, a traffic impact study is not necessary to ensure safe movement of pedestrian or vehicular traffic onsite."
I have a question there, second to the final sentence that says the planning board may require a traffic study. Should that be notwithstanding the foregoing? I mean, does that mean even if you don't have 25 or more peak hour trips, or 250 or daily trips, that if the planning board determines that traffic study is warranted anyway? Is that what that means, or otherwise that sentence doesn't make much sense to me? And what is... why is it?
I think there are two different things. Is that possible that the traffic impact is an access study?
So, you're trying to make a difference between A and B, or just the difference between the first sentence of A and then the second sentence?
The first sentence of B and second sentence of B.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, the first sentence requires it in the...
There's a trigger there, you know, if you need that threshold, you definitely require a plan.
How do you know you made that threshold? If you didn't even get a permit yet?
Who could be paying for it?
Well, there's no account because it didn't happen yet, right? That's hard to say, oh, that's going to get 27 visits an hour. I don't think you can actually...
And that does pose a standard for, which is a challenge for how you determine that standard is.
Would that be something that the commission would come up with?
The commission is not going to be looking at traffic count.
Let's try to determine something right here.
It's a non-no right now.
Yeah, it's a non-no, but what we need to determine is what is actually needed. And I think that what the intent of this may have been was for a retail establishment, more than a farm.
Yes.
I don't think they're looking at a farm.
I was likely to say prohibited by law from having traffic.
Yes, so, we need to, I think it could be more specific.
You could maybe make it specific to marijuana retailers shall be required to have a traffic study, which the planning board can waive if they don't think it's going to be...
Mr. Chairman, there's also another wrinkle. If this happens to be on Route 6, it may very well be a mandatory referral to the KICOT Commission, because it's something that would be up regi... Just the way that proposed city trade parks may have had a mandatory referral.
And that referral then would include a traffic impact study?
Yes.
Automatically?
That's a KICOT...
That would be a KICOT study, right.
So, that was the term of this point, you said that may.
That's because I'm not familiar with the current standards that KICOT is using.
Well...
I think you're looking for predominantly at marijuana retailers that are going to be generating this traffic. So, you can say a traffic impact and access study shall be required for all marijuana retailers and MNTC, whatever the retail designation is. And then you take out the language that generate, just take out the trip generation language.
Are we all in agreement that it is mostly about the retail establishment?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. I'm actually worried about the co-op on this particular item.
Then you can have a study shall be based on standard traffic engineering, yada yada. That sentence is fine. Then you're going to take out the planning board requires a study, if their determination one is warranted. We're just going to put it in sort of standards for marijuana retailers. But then you can keep that last sentence and you may waive the requirement of a traffic impact study if in the opinion of the planning board is not necessary to ensure, and that should say safe, not save. Safe movement of pedestrians or vehicular traffic onsite. So, if you have a location that is so remote that you don't think, even if you have, you know, 100 people coming hour, it's going to pose any problems, you can waive that requirement. But it's going to be only marijuana retailers or marijuana dispensaries that would trigger it in the first instance.
Does that detect us, does that take care of everything? I just want to make sure.
Well, unless somebody comes in and proposes a million square foot facility that has 250 employees and a lot of livery trucks every hour.
And you're going to sell marijuana?
Excuse me? I don't think that's going to happen at the moment. I think that the protection is for the retailer.
That was the traffic study I was reading last night.
Really?
A waived issue, if I get this correct, could be established after the fact. I'm sending a letter from the waiter, and I said they didn't shake it off.
A complaint about what?
Correct.
Why would you waive something if they were playing? All right, well, listen, there's still something that's rattling me, and I'm trying to get it out, so... Here's the thing. A traffic study doesn't do things other than study the traffic. Required a traffic study does not actually require remediation.
Hence the wrong way to happen.
Well, I mean, once you have a traffic study that shows what your impacts are, then that's part of your conditioning of your site plan or your special permit. If to mitigate those impacts there, or to determine that a site is simply, you know, not feasible for the volume that is anticipated, I mean, that's where your informed conditioning or discretionary review comes into play.
That's clarifying to me, thank you. Okay, what's wording now? What is the wording that we're going to try to use?
So, a traffic impact and access study shall be required for all marijuana retailers and MNTCs retail destinations.
So, I think we used an abbreviation in the table of use designation, like MNTC.
MNTC. Yeah, Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, just branch area slash retail.
Yeah, I think we just did DR. And if you look at the definitions, I think it's MNTCDR.
Yes.
And then you're going to want to capitalize marijuana retailer. And delete retail destinations. And just put a small s on the end there.
"The study shall be based on standard traffic engineering guidelines developed by the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act, TNEPA. The planning board may waive the requirement of a traffic impact study if, in the opinion of the planning board, a traffic impact study is not necessary to ensure safe movement of pedestrian or vehicular traffic onsite."
Satisfied? Yes. Thank you. That works for me. Shall we head to section H?
Yes.
Official.
So, I think I have a comment in here that there's some, there's some language in here that may be more generally specific to all RMEs. And likewise, we do may have some language in the prior section, for example, the resource plan, that is more applicable just to the cultivators. So, I think we can go through this language, but then we may want to shift things around a little bit so that we have, you know, everything that's sort of specific to all applicants, and then a section that's specific to additional requirements for cultivation and processing, or something like that. So, that's just the state, it's all lumped in here together, but...
I think I'm going to ask you to help clarify as we read through. Okay, thank you. Okay, H, Additional Provisions Regarding Cultivation. Number one. "All special permit determinations or site plan reviews shall be conducted on a case basis, taken into consideration, one, a particular form of marijuana activity proposed, for example, indoor or outdoor cultivation; two, the site location, including proximity of the butters, schools, or sensitive natural habitat; or historic properties identified in the town's inventory of historic resources; three, traditional uses of the site and their similarity to or difference from the proposed activities; and four, the intensity of the proposed activities, including impacts on neighbors and the environment."
So, this is, this again is proposed, came from the cultivation draft. So, this is basically some of your site plan special permit review criteria. You talked about incorporating by reference the existing criteria. These are perhaps an additional review criteria that could apply to all applicants, not just the... So, they may, this may not be the right location for them. And I think you should also consider whether or not any of these are implicative of what is already in the site plan special permit criteria and the other sections of the bylaw that we've incorporated by reference. But if these are additional criteria, I think they're reasonable to include here for the board's consideration in permitting uses.
Comments? Mr. Chairman, for consistency, I would like to stick the statement or the phrase "site plan review" to be followed by "and special permit determination", so the people understand the site plan review comes first.
Do you want me to comment?
Chicken or egg?
I don't think it matters.
Good, then let's move site plan review into the other one.
And I think it's a case by case basis, not a case.
Yes, I think so.
But I think there are enough additional concerns here that I'd like to see this stay in. And in fact, the TRO Historical Commission asked me to specifically propose the reference to historic properties, so they specifically asked that be included.
I'm just wondering, I mean, I can understand somebody wanting something in here. I wondered whether it made a difference for location? If something is near something old that's already a legacy farm?
I think perhaps it's more, you know, if you're going to stick up metal buildings and it's right next to a historic structure, does that have a greater impact on sort of...
Okay, Chairman, thank you.
...impact of that view versus, you know, nowhere and nothing else historically sensitive is nearby.
Thank you. Wait, is that okay? Did we change "all site plan review"? Thank you.
I would maybe suggest removing the "by the indoor or outdoor occupation" parenthesis from there. We don't think it's necessary, and I think because we're going to make this not specific to cultivators, it suggests a limited scope of review, but is not intended.
So, then the... That's just on the number one.
I would say number one, the particular form of marijuana activity proposed. You're just going to consider that, it doesn't need a clarifying symbol.
And that's because those aren't the only two examples. Everyone comprehend that? As poorly as me? No? Okay. Satisfied with the now current language of this part? Peter?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Karen? Yes.
So, then my suggestion would be to move this perhaps, or just put a note here to move this to its own standalone section, which would be, I think we have at the end sort of special permit and site plan review criteria, and have that be a standalone paragraph in its own section.
Yes. So, that would be a note. Thank you.
And then you could include it at the beginning, if you just wanted some of that clarifying language from before that would, as a preamble to that. In addition to the special permit and site plan review criteria in sections, you know, 30.8 and 70.4 of the bylaw, all special permits should be conducted on a case by case basis, also taking into consideration ban ban bans for this. Just forget that, Jess, sorry.
I forgot ban ban ban.
I'll fix this after. We can take a minute.
Okay. We can keep going?
Number two, "All special permit applications shall include the following. One, a copy of a provisional license or provisional certificate of registration from the state of Massachusetts as an RME, as a RME..."
An.
"...under 935 CMR 500, space, or..."
Wait, was I... Okay. There you go.
Okay, let's... All special permit applications shall include the following. Hold on, I think one, a copy of a provisional license or provisional certificate of registration from the state of Massachusetts as an RME under 935 CMR 500, space, or a MNTC under 105 CMR 725, that's a zero. Number two, an executed HCA.
We defined HCA, and we're obviously going to spell that out with those community agreements.
It's out of the definition.
Just spell it out.
Okay.
Jess, does the co-op have to go through all these things, please, before you...
Well, they'll have to, because they have a zoning warranty pass.
Right.
An HCA is a requirement under the state law, so we have to have that HCA.
Great. Three, a site plan showing existing conditions on the site. The boundaries of any proposed outdoor growing area. Four...
An "and" in there, site plan? Outer site.
A site plan growing...
Showing existing conditions on the site and the boundaries of any proposed outdoor...
For elevations of any proposed new construction for indoor growing and/or processing. For elevations of any proposed new construction for indoor growing and/or processing. By a plan of any new signage.
Keep out.
Six, a narrative describing the management and general operation of the facility. Six, security plan or...
I sense we're not getting to your plans elsewhere. Do we get it now?
Well, I mean, like I said, because now we're trying to merge language written by the cooperative with language that was originally in the bylaw, which is why some of this is going to apply, and we're going to have to sort of break this apart and decide what needs to go in the other section and what needs to stay here and what needs to be cultivated.
Number seven, a fire protection plan, if applicable. Possibly number eight, it's a bit of a... A table showing the use and square footage of all proposed buildings and a completed special permit application.
I'm actually going to put in a number for one. Okay, so my primary comment on this is that this paragraph should be more appropriately included under application requirements, which is the section we just discussed. However, some of this is duplicative of what was in there. For example, we already have a section on security plan, and we have much more detailed language with respect to resource plan and traffic and circulation plan. So I think if, once you discuss that this is the information you want, I think we should take this and merge it and format it such that it becomes sort of standalone sections within that application requirement section, and you can have the language for your security plan and your traffic plan and everything sort of separately listed.
Application requirements. Right, security plan. So we don't mention the license or provisional certificate of registration anywhere in the resource plan. These are the application requirements. I agree that maybe this just needs to be sectioned out into the...
Into the application.
Application requirements and redundancies removed and items that stand alone. Is that something we have time to do now, or...
I think we could, I mean, I think what we need is agreement from the board that this is what we want in terms of the submissions, and then we can work on getting that sort of spelled out and properly formatted in the previous section.
So the question I had is, is there anything missing in this number two that isn't addressed in application requirements? And I, all I'm going to say is, eighteen, no, not, that wasn't one. I'm sorry. It would be three, the site plan showing existing, no, that's not the one. Sorry. I saw it a second ago and I'm like... Okay, so we have this, what was nine, but it's eight. A table showing the use and square footage of all proposed buildings. So, but that says proposed buildings. And then there's an existing and use, show existing conditions on the site. You know, at one point we asked to encourage the use of existing buildings that were existing. And this doesn't address that.
It's an inherent...
Okay, so is it possible we should look at the next paragraph, too, and see where that goes?
Well, I mean, this is, this is a question of what do you want shown on your site plan to agree, right? So you're going to have a straight site plan that shows your existing conditions on the site. Do you want that site plan to also specify what the use of those existing conditions are? I mean, that's, I think, why I...
Existing use, proposed use, those kinds of things. If you're trying to encourage the use of existing buildings, rather than, you know, let's try to do it a lot more, if some of the uses are going to be shifted to cannabis. I'm not one of the co-op, and I don't know, I don't know if all of the attention was to create new spaces to grow, that the growing spaces are already...
I think this is more about showing on a plan what is being proposed. This is what's going to be submitted. These are the requirements of the submission. I think if you know what the existing conditions are, you have the ability in that permit process to ask about what those uses are and what those changes of uses might be.
I have no problem with that concept. That's great. Just wanted to ask about order of operations when Paul said site plan happens before special permit. That's fine.
Well, I think we also talked about the fact that site plan happens before special permit if you have a different special permit granting authority than site plan review authority. If, if this ends up being all under the umbrella of the planning board, you're going to just hear everything altogether.
That's appropriate. It's true. But the, the thing that gets mentioned here is a host agreement, and where in the line does that happen? Because I understand you have to have a host agreement before certain things can happen. And I don't want to get this order screwed up here so that nobody can get it done.
So honestly, the host, an executed host community agreement, I don't know that's a necessary requirement for your zoning, because what you put in here is that you need a copy of a provisional license or provisional certificate of registration. Nobody can get one of those unless they've signed a host community agreement. So the host community agreement has to come first, then the state does its licensing, and once the state does its licensing and it's issued a provisional, then they're going to come to the town for their, their use permits, and then the state is going, and they're going, and then they're going to get their building permits and build, and the state's going to come to a final inspection and issue their final certificate. They're going to get their occupancy permit from the town, and then they're going to be able to open. That's sort of the timeline for how this would proceed. The idea behind requiring a copy of a provisional license or provisional certificate is that it essentially puts the, the town in a position of forcing these applicants to go through the state process before they come for their local permits. You're not going to have someone come in who hasn't, doesn't have a fully formulated plan and apply it for a permit, and then go to the state, and the state says, well, we want you to change this, 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 and this, and then all of a sudden, whatever you looked at on the local level is changed based on what the state requires. So if they get their state license first, get that provisionally approved, then you know what you're looking at, because the chance of that changing through that process is, is less than if they come in for their local permits before or during the process of state licensing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If there are any changes, how do we deal with those things? If the state changes something at some point, does the applicant have to come back to us?
Well, it depends on whether that change impacts how you current the project. Like, let's just say, for example, they come to you and they get a special permit for a certain canopy limit, and then they go to the state and they get a different canopy limit, and then there's an inconsistency between us two, and they need to increase their local permit to fit whatever their state cap or reduce it to, you know, whichever way it goes, and that may require a modification of the permit, but I have recommended to many communities that they, they follow this process of requiring provisional license or certificate of registration before the local permitting commences, so that you have a product, a project that is more clearly delineated and defined before you start that process of local permitting.
So after we approve everything, is that the point at which they can go from a provisional to an actual license?
Yeah, so the provisional, provisional is what allows them basically to, you know, get your building permits, you get your local permits, and then everything's going to have to be finally inspected. It's like the difference between a building permit and a certificate of occupancy.
So they come to us, we, we finish them off, they go and get their certificate.
Basically.
Perfect.
And where this would be placed, move to application requirement section? That's fine with me.
Yeah.
I just want to ensure that we understand that we don't provide a problem with the order, evidence. You're ensuring that we don't have a problem with the order? I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I'm sure everyone there who tries to do this.
Yes.
Number three, what do we already need?
Nope, we're on number three.
Okay, when indoor cultivation is proposed, existing buildings, barns, greenhouses, and containers shall be reused wherever possible. Any new construction that requires a building permit shall harmonize with nearby architectural styles to the greatest possible extent. The use of metal buildings or containers shall not be prohibited. However, reasonable natural screening may be required as a condition of the special permit or site plan review approval, so as to render such structure lesser, less visible from adjacent public and private ways and abutting properties. Paul?
Sounds good to me.
I thought you had something you wanted to say about natural screening.
Well, in, in another place, we said, or approved screen, screening, as opposed to just natural.
Existence of that?
Yes, I think that makes perfect sense. Mr. Chairman, considering that it's mentioned here, I will mention that I would like to see all structures used for the processing or cultivation of marijuana require a building
One second, Peter, I'm going to see where that...
Second sentence.
The use of, wait a second, any new construction. Any new construction that requires a building permit?
Right, but we don't require it for certain things. I don't think we should, from a law, but state law.
I don't think that would actually...
A building permit?
Sure.
We can't, you know, what can, what can state law require?
The concern, I think, is that a hoop house is not required, a building permit does not require that.
But what I'm saying is that we should require it.
I don't know if we're allowed to, I just, I understand what your thought is.
We can't, we can find that difficult.
I'll explain the things in the open meeting log. We can argue about. Let's try and figure out wording that makes sense and captures what the intent is. Fair enough, I mean, I'm not opposed to this language because we want to use existing buildings. That's, I think, what the gist of this is. So now, when we say any new construction that requires a building permit. And if it were a hoop house...
Peter, Paul.
And if it were a hoop house which does not require a building, and were used for carrots growing vegetation, then there would be a screening required to be met. I think that's where we have some trouble. I don't know that we rewrite the building codes.
I just thought it would be a good way to keep track of things and not allow any proliferation of ugly structures, that's all. Not rocket science.
No, no, it's not that I oppose that. I just think that we can't rewrite everything to satisfy that. But the protection is already written in with the screening, unless you feel that that's not true. I mean, we are all site-specific already.
I think it is duplicative in a large part, and this may be where Katie and Jess may use as their re-formating, rearranging to eliminate all the duplicative language, because we've already talked about screening on, in containers. So I think we just, we just need them to...
I think the first sentence is almost the fourth sentence in this section is that we would encourage the use of existing structures. Anytime that you're going to put something new up, we always cover that as far as the screening and the permitting, and so, whether that's needed here or where this actually should go.
I think we can agree on the substance of the language. We can fit it in and make sure it's covered in the pervert section.
Does that, does that get us to the end game? Because I don't know where it does go at the moment. Does that, and then...
I actually have to leave close to two o'clock.
Yes, so we should try to continue.
Close to the end.
We are close to the end, aren't we?
Almost, yeah. Set number four.
Okay, so we understand that the substance of this is that we are encouraging the, the use of existing, and the rest of the items in here is duplicative, as we've covered in other sections. So where to actually put that is... Okay, now, number four, security fencing, as required by the commission, shall be as inconspicuous as possible and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In no case shall barbed wire topped fence or similar style be permitted. Are you familiar with the CCC's fencing requirements? Do they specify anywhere?
I don't think they have a specific barbed wire requirement.
Or barbed wire exclusion?
Or exclusion. They just have a fencing requirement and a security requirement for outdoor cultivation.
Do they describe the fence at all? I mean, it's hard to imagine that it's anything but a psycho fence.
A perimeter security fence designed to prevent unauthorized entry to the cultivation facility is assigned to notify the server that it is a limited access area.
I have no problem with this wording that we have. Do you have any problems with the wording we have here?
I do not. My, my only question is, can you have a fence that meets the requirement that it's sufficient to secure without barbed wire or similar styles? I mean, that's, that's going to be a CCC determination, so can you include it and see where it comes out?
Only on this particular topic, I was shown some photography of fencing. It did not seem to have barbed wire on the top. It was rather tall.
Yeah, and it's going to be monitored.
Yes, so, oh, I think I'll leave the language. Mr. Chairman, do we want to consider a setback requirement for any fencing? We have a setback requirement.
Not preventances.
Pardon?
Not preventances.
You mean, I can put my fence right on the property lawn? You mean, I can put my fence right on the property lawn?
Some people put it in the roof.
Can I, can I put my fence on the neighbor's property? Somebody tell my name.
Until someone complains about it.
It's gonna be throughout the seat.
Uh, is this the appropriate time to do that? I mean, I understand the thought, I don't know if it's something I could address as a, as a solution in order to screen something. I couldn't put it on the property lawn. I only bring this up inasmuch as, uh, public comments were addressed to this issue oftentimes at meetings, past meetings. So I was wondering if I might, um, incorporate those concerns.
Given leeway with the fencing, we can just ask what the neighbors want to see and go from there.
If the neighbors don't want to see fence, how about that? But they didn't need to have
Well, then it has to be glass.
I'm at a loss with this one because like I said, some of this is all new territory for us. I came from a community that did not allow fences at all. So I'm gonna tell you. Tell you. I haven't, I have no opinion about the setback other than you can't really put a, a hedge up on your neighbor's property to hide your fence. So, you know, your setback concept has merit. That's what I would say.
You can put anything on your neighbor's property.
That's true.
I think this could be addressed in your site plan.
Okay. Can we do that? We're gonna address it in site number.
You have a later payment requirement, right?
Yep.
Number five. Six minutes here. The all lighting systems level true or biologs and be shielded so as not to shed light onto adjacent properties. The Board of Appeals
That should be the planning.
The Planning Board may require any artificial lighting system to employ only LED components equipped with deflectors in order to mitigate potential light pollution. That's really restrictive on this board's opinion of what possible light sources are in the future. But okay.
We could say instead of LED specific? What are the requirements?
At this point? No, we don't have the best ones. Maybe need lighting.
Well, it's my understanding that the, that energy requirements imposed by the cannabis control point in respect to grow lights are such that you can only meet those requirements if you use LED lighting.
Correct.
All right, so let's see if this says this right now.
All right.
All right?
Good.
Unless you have something better to say. Number six, the planning board shall include in its approval a mandatory condition of any cultivation activities that sales, gifts, or delivery of mani- marijuana or marijuana products directly to the public shall be prohibited.
Is that part of the state law?
Or is there something wrong with the, the actual wording of this?
No, I mean, so this is this is a state law requirement that's been put into the zoning file. I don't think it's necessary. Um, the one thing you might want to include in there is, is a and again, so we're in a category that's specific to cultivation. So cultivators cannot sell, gift, or deliver marijuana to the general public because that's not part of their license. If you were going to make this provision more specific to all marijuana establishments, as I would include retailers, then you might want to just, I mean, the sales and gifts you could take out because that's gonna be state regulated. But as of right now, delivery is not permitted under the state regulations. That may change. You can include a delivery prohibition for marijuana retailers until such time as the state addresses that. And then you can, you know, revisit it if it looks like you have a retailer that wants to engage in that practice.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Oh, you shouldn't get it done in two seconds.
Can retailers give gifts?
I, I don't believe so.
No, I think the control over the cannabis is from seed to
Sell.
Seed to sale tracking.
Yeah, it's, it's not something you can give away other than your own personal inventory, which is already talked about. So that's, I don't think that's a concern of mine. Why don't we leave that alone for now? And go, uh, just, it might be something in the, in the actual language.
Sure.
Say that's duplicative and you're suggesting this as we move in?
The delivery issue is an open issue in, if right now, nobody can deliver direct to consumers. That's completely prohibited under this, the act. It is likely that in the next, um, year, I'll say, but it could be sooner than that. The state will provide guidance and guidelines and allow, start allowing delivery of a product, property dealer.
Not at that time.
But, um, so it was preemptively prohibited if you had concerns about that or you could just strike a little higher section. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, well, we have two minutes.
So we'll strike that.
Always have that.
We have a question. Mr. Chairman, that's not broken with delivery.
That's it.
That's a great service.
I think we should just strike that.
Uber is a Uber, that's the way. They do food now.
Strike, I'm gonna read this quickly. Paul's leaving. In the case of marijuana cultivators, is this the last item? Or are actually
No, this is the last, and the other one is sort of a placeholder, but I think we've sort of addressed that.
Okay, great. We have the sections.
The such conditions, we're gonna move that paragraph from
Okay, I have some additions to make.
And then
Or to discuss, we can use some other time.
It's gonna have to be another time. I don't think I'll get through this.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should just stop here. Katie needs to leave.
And I think that this section may require more discretion. I think it's
Okay, I'll let you down and we'll just continue this meeting to our next scheduled planning board meeting.
Sure, it, it's September 19th at six.
Do you need me here?
Do we need you here?
Yeah.
Maybe we get a no special
It may, maybe that we want you here.
But we always want
It may not be that you have to be here.
Maybe you can be here by phone.
Maybe there'll be a phone, I, I could be available by phone. Let me just check my schedule. There's a lot of marijuana action happening in September. September 19th?
Yes, at six.
At six?
Is that
I could be available by phone.
Okay.
So that's not a problem with the timing, given the probable net fate for the county now, right? We're okay with that? No, in terms of
We're still okay.
Yeah, we're still okay.
We're still okay for now.
How's your day on the night? All good?
Till it's six o'clock?
Six o'clock, yep, yeah.
What date is that?
Oh, Wednesday, September 19th.
Wednesday.
No, uh, the 19th.
Wednesday, the 19th.
Cause it's 6:00 PM in the pool.
That's correct. I'll ask.
Excuse me?
Jess, do you know how many items are on the agenda for that day?
Just the one that we continued last night.
Okay. I'm all for that. Anything else to talk about right now?
I don't think so.
Thank you all so much. Great effort being here already.
Motion to continue.
With no provisions.
We need a motion to
Do we do a motion to continue?
I'm waiting for it.
Oh.
Move to continue till
September 19th at 6:00.
At 6:00 PM.
Second by rule, so in favor? I reposed any of the statements, who asked one of us? Next motion.
Move to adjourn.
My
It's just one word, you know?
No, no, no. Thank you, Katie. Proceeding is adjourned.
Thank you, Katie.
We're ready.